They're not even going in there. And so we decided that that's probably not a good thing for us to do. I don't know if that situation has changed, but it has not changed. So it's been that way for over a week. And again, if you wanna know what the details are about why they're locked down. Like I said, it was a threat to the mayor and to the sheriff's department. So we decided not to go, excuse me, to the uh, to the extension office. And so we're still working from home, looking at other opportunities. We've had ongoing conversations with the health department. Some of you are aware of that. They have great offices up there. We're not ready to pull the trigger to move up there. But again, we're looking at long, short term and long term solutions. And right now, the short term solutions are. We're doing the best we can, working from home. We have three staff people. Beth is the district coordinator. We have a soil person and a water person. And they're both working with the county departments on MS four and working with with landowners to do what we can. I think that's about all I can tell you.
I've questioned.
Please, and I'll ask everybody to speak up. I got hearing aids in, but they're not working really well right now.
Okay, alright. The county pays the employees. But they're not county employees.
They are county employees.
They are.
That's why we need a.
They're in a federal building.
Okay, right.
Right.
Okay, I was always wondering how that worked.
Yeah, the payroll and benefits are coming through the county.
Okay.
Is just paid for by the federal.
Okay.
And we have a.
What about the laptops and?
Well, the computer systems that are in the office belong to the federal. To the government, to the federal government, because we're on a system. Again, Beth can explain it better than me. That's a national system. For NRCS and all the EPA, et cetera, et cetera. But we have personal computers as well, and that's what they've been using to do emails, et cetera. The phone system is obviously, not obviously, but the phone system is a federal telephone system.
Okay. And you did say the lease has been renewed for three years?
That's our understanding, Jim. Again, we were told in September, Beth, we haven't seen a copy of it yet. Uh, why don't you come on up? You're gonna be talking anyway. So uh, we, we um, like I said, we put together a list of things that we thought that the FSA, who is the signer signer of the lease, should address with the landlord or landlord. And they did, and he made uh, about a dozen uh, problems with the building. He's he's fixed about a half of it.
Alright, so who, who's gonna review the lease? Are you gonna, is the lease gonna come back to you? And should Andy?
It'll come back to us to to look at, but not to really review and sign. It's already been signed. The reason that we look at.
If it hasn't been reviewed.
Pardon me?
Federally signed.
FSA.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, but the reason that we review it is we have a memorandum of understanding with FSA and NRCS of services that we provide to them without charge. In return, we get the uh, be there rent free and use the computers and the telephone system.
Okay. I don't have any other questions here.
Do you have any questions?
No, no, I I I don't see how, why they shut the building down when the building's already been paid for. That doesn't make sense, but.
Well, why the building was shut down for the government shutdown?
Right.
Well, it's, you know, like any other several building, they just shut it down. Andy, you explain it. You're a lawyer. I mean, I guess that's their prerogative.
Right, right.
Just like.
My point being, there's no federal employees there that, there's no federal employees needed to keep the building open. Doesn't make sense to me logically, but.
Yeah, so there there are federal employees there, and RCS and FSA are federal employees.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, and they get paid obviously by the United States government. Right now, they're on furlough, so they're not being paid. But that's why it's a federal building.
So that's why they're shutting it down.
Connie, any questions?
No, we're gonna be passing a um.
Beth, why don't you talk a little bit about the KI and our annual meeting and anything?
Well, excuse me. First of all, I wanted to correct Ken. For over three years, my name is Terrell, not Terrell. But um, what'd you say, Jim? I needed to hear you.
Do- just your name?
Oh, it's Beth Terrell. Yeah, I'm the district coordinator. Um, I wanted to talk about the annual meeting. We usually start planning that this time of the year. We have it in March of every year. And I contacted, actually, I read an article in a newsletter a couple of weeks ago about a program called Agribility. I'd never heard of it before. I was very interested in it. So I contacted three of the people in the email, in the article, through an email and asked them to explain it to me a little bit more, excuse me. And one of the gentlemen that was actually the founder of the program called me about a week later and told me that he had read my email in a staff meeting that they'd had and was very interested in talking with me. So he explained to me how the program started. When he was a little boy, he worked on a dairy farm. And the farmer had polio, and his job was to open and shut the gates. So he decided that he wanted to help farmers like this in the same situation. So in nineteen seventy nine, he had, he was, he's a professor at Purdue. And he was working in the Department of Ag. And a disabled farmer came to him. He had, was injured in a truck accident and had, uh, was a paraplegic. And he asked if there was any kind of modifications that could be made to his tractor to help him get on and off of the tractor easily. And they designed something. They took a lift off of a wrecked school bus and mounted it between the wheels of the tractor, his four-wheel drive tractor, and then that enabled him to get on and off of it. So fast forward forty-six years later, he is, has helped almost fourteen thousand people in twenty-two states with this program. So I asked him to come to our annual meeting. He's very busy, but he does have the date confirmed. It will be March twelfth at six thirty. We're gonna send out invitations when we know more. But our location, we haven't determined that yet. I wanna speak with the board on that next week. But we're trying to coordinate that with the theme that we already have going. So that's um, what our plans are. I will know more next week about the location. And I can get in touch with everybody. Um, OKI, we went to that tour last Friday in Kenton County. And we toured several different facilities there. Um, OKI is Ohio, Kentucky, and Indiana. Chris, our chairman over there, wanted to know why Ohio was first and Indiana was last, and I don't know that, but um, that was, we had a good time on that day too. So see anybody having questions for me?
No, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thanks, man. Okay. Ms. Whitehead, MS four coordinator, you have some updates for us for Randall Avenue cleanup?
Get these televisions turned on so I can show you some pictures. Um, I'm gonna go through an update um, that a written update, and then I'll show you some pictures that kind of supplement what what I'm about to tell you. Nicole, would you wanna come up here and do this, and then I can start talking if you get me hooked up? Okay, thank you. Alright, so um, this process started, started back in um, July. Actually, it started in May when um Stacy Goodwin from IDEM came and did a uh, review and audit of the county. So um, in that time, you know, we found out that we needed to do some cleanup at the highway department location. So um, there's been something that has happened every month since then. Um, I've given some reports um, you know, through July and August and um, so I'll kinda start in September uh, to give you some details of what's been happening. So in September, we received a Waters of the U.S. delineation report from Metric Environmental. Um, we were told that we needed to determine whether there was a wetland area at the highway department. There is in fact a small wetland there. Um, it's point three seven acres. And there were also two streams totaling three hundred and forty-six linear feet within the investigation area. So um, those those areas were impacted by materials, unnatural materials that would have been placed at the highway department. September twenty-fifth, we had a meeting, um, Tim, the highway department superintendent, myself. Thank you. Sam from BFNS, our engineer, engineering company. And the IDEM wetlands section told them that we had this wetland area that was impacted and asked them, what do we do next? What do you want us to do? So there um, they of course want us to remove the materials, the non-natural materials that are in the wetland area, but they didn't want us to impact the area further by going down with heavy machinery or anything like that. Um, we were also allowed to leave natural debris in place um, to avoid unnecessary disturbance of the existing wetlands. And then we're supposed to install a permanent barrier. So it'll be more clear what this kinda looks like is when I show you the pictures. So the next day, I started doing some requests for chain link fencing for Randall Avenue and also for our county farm location because we have some we've had some issues of dumping in those locations. Am I correct, Tim? So um, you know, the answer to that is chain link fence with gates so that people can't just get into those properties without us knowing. Um, so we did uh, send out, or we received four bids and older fence was chosen. Um, and that will cost fifty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, just to go back, the company that did the wetland delineation for us was Metric Environmental, and that cost four thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, the trash that has been removed from that site, Tim paid for out of his budget. Um, so, you know, um, there was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was appropriated that Denny went to counsel and got appropriated for the cleanup of this site and any, any associated costs for that. So we're doing pretty well, four thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars to Metric Environmental. And then we haven't gotten the chain link fence yet. We would like to get it as soon as possible, um, but fifty-seven thousand dollars will be taken out of that money for that. So next, um, the highway department crew has been removing the non-natural materials from that wetland and stream areas. And let me just, let me just pull this up.
Do you have a contract for the uh, for the fencing?
Yeah, older, older fencing is.
And do you have a contract with them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yep. And you know, they're busy. Um, you know, he said it would probably be a couple of months. Probably like December is what we're looking at. So um, Denny had said he would mark the area for the fence so that we get it in the proper place. Um, so hopefully, again, December is when we're looking to have that done. Um, so on the screen, you'll see, this is the, this is the upland area where we had some things that need to be cleaned up per IDEM. Non-nat- some unnatural materials, but that's then some, you know, wood and things like that that we were able to Tim got a tub grinder from Wilhelm Lumber. Wilhelm Lumber came out and ground all that up. So this is kinda what the top of the staging area looks like. This is where um, Wilhelm Lumber came out and did that grinding. And all of that material is, is gone now too. The wood. So this is where, this is how the site looks now. They did a fantastic job of cleaning up that staging area. Um, you can see that we do still have a pile of millings there, which is not in the greatest spot because it's right on the edge um, along, if you can see my, no, you can't see my um, pointer, but along the edge of that pile of millings, that's where that stream is. So then it just kinda goes down into the valley. So Tim does have plans for those millings um, down the road, so. And then on that flat area, that's where the barrier is going to go in. And Tim has concrete barriers that he'll be able to line up along there. Um, and keep people out of that area in the back, so there will be no more dumping. Um, because that's down into where that wetland area is. So it's, it's really hard to see on pictures, but that's what it looks like. That's standing at the top of the hill and looking down. So, um, so down in the bottom of the hill, at the bottom of the hill where the wetland is, um, the county moved removed approximately four thousand pounds of trash. All kinds of items. Some of the non-natural material was left in place due to safety reasons. And um, IDEM is asking us to document where that, where that um, where those items are and let them know. And we're asked, we are going to request a permit in place for that material instead of having to remove it because there were safety reasons um, not to pull those things out. So just to give you an idea of what it kinda looked like down in the bottom. Um, you can see tires and metal and just basic trash, so you know, it was a bit of a challenge to get some of that material out of there because of how steep that is. So um, you can see in this slide, they had a, their track hoe out there and a bucket. And then you can see um, one of the employees standing on that hill, and that's a big giant nylon kinda bag that they would just fill with junk off the ground, and then they'd attach a chain to that and drag it back up the hill. And here's some more pictures of just what was down below there. And you know, kinda gives you an understanding of why IDEM doesn't want us to leave that stuff out there because open dumping was uh, outlawed many, many years ago, back in the seventies. So um, you know, this just isn't allowed, and we just need to clean it up. Um, so this is what it looks like now. So the picture on the left is standing at the bottom of that hill and looking up. And then the other picture is looking to the west um, out into the bulk of the wetland. So you can see that there's just some wood. And as I said, we did have some unnatural, non-natural materials that we had to leave there just because if we would have pulled anything else out, stuff would have started falling down the hill on us. And you'll kinda see that in this next picture. I think that's a washing machine or something like that stuck up in there, and there was also um of, an aluminum ladder that was kind of buried underneath the pile. So let's see where I am on my notes. Um, again, just to give you an idea of what has been spent out of that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, four thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars to Metric Environmental. Um, we're, we have a contract with BFNS, um, the engineer that has been helping us with dealing with IDEM, writing a stormwater pollution prevention plan for the county highway site. Um, that and uh, we've got some other issues that we need to address out there, and I'll talk about those in a minute. So we have a contract with them for not to uh, not to exceed twenty thousand five hundred dollars. And then the fifty-seven thousand dollars for the chain link fence at two properties, at Randall Avenue and at Manchester. So that's eighty-two thousand dollars. So I talked about, so, so we have some remaining steps that we need to do. Um, I talked about placing the barrier along the west edge of the uh, material storage site. We have the, the stormwater pollution prevention plan that I talked about. Well, I'll be doing education and ongoing implementation to help Tim with that. Um, with his employees, um, you know, training them on proper procedures um, and placement of materials and, and management of chemicals and things on their site. Um, this next slide shows you an erosion goalie that the, is located on the highway department property between the salt barn and uh, one of their equipment storage bu- buildings. So um, this is something that we are required to fix. We have talked about installing a French drain on the north side of that building to effectively carry the water and mitigate surface water impacts to that salt storage area. Um, Tim knows of some companies that we can deal with, with that. And then BFNS, the engineering company, is going to help us engineer this um, erosion area with some Fleximatt, and, and that's something that we need to get installed also. So one of the other big issues at the um, Randall Avenue site is this. So we have some impacted soils at, next to the salt barn. So why does this happen? Why do we have all this dead vegetation? Well, we have salt and sand that every year they mix salt and sand. We do it outside, and that's not an acceptable practice to leave this outside because then we get this. Because when it rains, then that salt washes onto the property. So another thing that we have started looking at, and, and I say we because I'm trying to help Tim with this because I know he has limited time and um, you know, just needs some help to get some things done besides his other uh, besides his other responsibilities. So um, we've started looking at the cost of a, a store, a, a mixing and storage free stand free span building, kinda like what they have out there, but another one excuse me, just for mixing the salt and sand and then having that inside.
All these items that you've been talking about have expenses associated with them. Is that all coming out of that original two hundred and fifty thousand?
That's what we're trying to make it work, yes. So that's why I wanted to point out that what we have spent so far is eighty-two thousand dollars, or what we have designated as eighty-two thousand dollars out of two hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, that's still a chunk.
Mm-hmm. So um, the, Tim, what was the rough estimate of the new free span building?
One hundred and twenty something about.
Two hundred thousand, right there.
Right.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And we should have a truck wash. That's another two hundred thousand.
So um, the salt, sand and salt mixing building, um, this little area. I, I think you can see like where my red circle is. That's where the salt and sand is sitting outside right now. Well, where this raised area is, there's a pond right there, and that was originally designed to collect stormwater from the site and collect the salt. But you can see that it has failed, and this is the second time it's failed, right? So we're gonna do away with this. It doesn't work, and eventually we're going to fill that in. And you know, in talking with Tim and talking with engineering company, they feel like if we just get that salt and sand mix out of the elements, we're going to get rid of this problem. So um, I think that's about it. There's a picture of the, of that pond and then just a close-up of that salt and sand outside. So any question?
Tim, you're gonna get that covered. The salt and sand mix, is that still?
It's inside.
He moved it inside.
Okay.
One flat area where it's cleaned up, you're gonna put the barricades, or do you have to restore that property behind it then?
Well, um, that's what we're waiting to hear back from IDEM because um, they did a pretty good job of cleaning things up down below. Uh, you know, when we originally talked to IDEM, they said you might have to do some mitigation elsewhere like maybe do some plantings elsewhere. Um, but if they deem that, you know, that it's satisfactory and um, maybe not as detrimental to the environment as once thought, maybe we won't have to do that. But that, we haven't totally knocked that out. That as, you know, not a possibility.
Could be just seeded and. Well, that's the hope, just reseed it, let it grow back.
Well, that, that area, that the flat area, nothing has to be done to that, honestly.
Area I was talking about, is that just gonna be seeded and blocked off?
The barricade.
Yeah.
Behind the barricade to the outside, it will be reseeded.
Reseeded as grass, okay. Yeah.
But, but on this, on this front side, Tim, where you guys he's gonna block a lot of that off because they, they, I don't have pictures of it, but they store um, riprap and, you know, other rock material out there. And that's like their staging area to get rid of things too, like whatever they bring back from out in the county, whether it's scrap metal or whatever, and sometimes it's mixed up. They have to have an area to sort those things out.
Right.
But then they need to get rid of it right away, you know, before we were leaving things there. And we're gonna have to dispose of those things and take them to proper, proper disposal areas. So.
Looks good so far.
They're doing a great job.
The two fifty is, that's currently available to you, right? Okay, is, is there a, a budget for twenty twenty-six?
Nope.
You're not sure yet what you're gonna have to do.
Well, I think the only other outstanding thing that we're talking about is a, is a truck wash. I mean, I think, well.
How much?
We can ship any of that water into sewage.
It has to go to a sanitary sewer. It has to be processed.
And don't know that they're gonna let us do that. I think we're gonna, Endoc keeps all their water on their site.
Okay.
And that's what they use to put on the highway that everybody hates. That's how they get rid of their water, that they clean their trucks with.
That's not a bad idea.
Well, that's how they do, they have to. They, so they, they pump the water, other ground tanks, in the trucks, and put it back on the road.
Okay.
That's what they do.
And I take that back. We do have, in that packet that I sent, um, there's a soil modification plan. Um, that impacted soil by the salt barn. Um, we're gonna have to do something with that eventually. But you know, one of the things that can happen with that is allowing it to allowing natural water to cleanse it. Um, but we can speed that up by adding gypsum. That's something that they um, suggested to us. Um, and then, you know, eventually we'll have to replant this area too. So there's, there's still some steps there that we need to do, and yeah, we really don't know what's that, what that's gonna cost, so.
Well, would you get some numbers? And if you exaggerate. Well, would you get some numbers? And if you exceed your two fifty, you need to let councilmen know so that they can plan.
Yep.
Just make sure you work with them. Anything else?
No, I don't think so. Tim, do you have anything to add?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good so far.
Mr. Listerman, highway engineer, you have some bid opening, your bid awards? Thank you, Sandra.
Todd Listerman, county engineer. Uh, last Tuesday, we had bid openings for three different projects. What I have today is uh paperwork for those three projects. Uh, the awards, Form ninety-six, and a contract agreement for small structure one twenty-seven. I'll start with uh small structure one twenty-seven. We hit three bids, Dave Rowe, uh Dave O'Meara Company. Paul Rowe Company and McCullough Escavating. The low bid was Dave O'Meara Contractor at four hundred and ninety-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. Uh, we've reviewed his documents, everything are in accordance. So what I got here today to sign is the notice of award. Then uh I will have the contract acceptance sheet for the Form ninety-six. As well as the contract agreement. And the contract agreement, uh Sue is the one I said needs to be notarized at the end. Uh, Connie, you'll have to attest to that one as well. Uh, so what I have here today is. The awards uh and paperwork for the awards for uh small structure one twenty-seven Greeley Road Replacement. To Dave O'Meara Contractor in amount of four hundred and ninety-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars even.
No questions about this? All right, then motion to approve the Dave O'Meara Contract for four hundred and ninety-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. For the small structure uh SS one twenty-seven Greeley Road Replacement. I'll second it. All in favor? Aye, motion carries.
Next, I have the award letter in the Form ninety-six. For the two thousand twenty-six paving county fund project. Just so everybody understands this contract. What happened was county council had given us one point five million dollars. To go ahead and try to use that for community crossing matching for this year. However, state legislatures changed the process. We're no longer fifty fifty, we're an eighty twenty. And the maximum amount of allowed in the grant is only gonna be a million dollars, not uh million five. So with that, county uh council has shifted funds. To of one point two five million to be let separately uh to be spent on roads. For repaving. Uh, the roads to be repaved uh with this contract is gonna be Salt Fork Road. Which is where uh Tim is working active, started this week on fixing a slip between State Road one and Jackson Ridge. Jackson Ridge Road and Legion Road. I had two bidders, uh the low bid was Dave O'Meara Contractors. In the amount of one million three hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty cents. We do have additional monies in our two minutes count to cover the extra above the one point two five million. So it'll cover the total contract cost. In this way, we we able to cover the money to be paved next spring or next summer. So what I'm asking here today is to sign the notice of award and the Form ninety-six. Uh, to Dave O'Meara Contractors in amount of one million three hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty cents.
Any questions? All right, Todd, um. Motion to approve the Dave O'Meara Contract of one million three hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty cents. For the uh paving funds for twenty twenty-six consisting of Salt Fork Ridge from. SR one to Jackson Ridge and Le- uh Legion Road. Second it, all in favor? Aye, motion carries.
Lastly, is the uh rehabilitation project for Bridge sixty-eight York Ridge Road. Uh, full deck replacement. Uh, York Ridge Road Bridge sixty-eight. We originally looked at this contract to try to do an overlay that previously had an overlay on it to try to extend its life. But after studying it and uh having uh our on-call engineering company. Do a thermal uh imaging of the bridge, the deterioration of amount of patching required on the deck. Warranted a complete replacement instead of trying to overlay it. So with that, we hit a bid opening for the bridge deck replacement of York Ridge Road Bridge sixty-eight there at Guilford. The low bid, we had six co- six bids on this one. The low bid is Beatty Construction. In the amount of nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars. Nine hundred and sixty-eight, three, three, five, even. So what I'm asking for today is the award uh in the Form ninety-six to be signed for that contract.
Questions about this? What is the Form ninety-six, by the way?
What's that?
What is that Form ninety-six?
It's a, it's a state form that basically uh it lists his financials, it lists his equipment. It's a state required form for bid contracts.
All right.
So it's just a state form that we have to do for all bidding contracts.
All right, so we're gonna approve the Form ninety-six. And also uh the Bridge sixty-eight York Ridge Road Deck Replacement in the amount of. Nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars. I'll second it. All in favor? Motion carries.
That's an all summer project, dude. It's it's a hundred and twenty days maximum.
That's a, that'll be a mouse.
That's a busy road.
It's a busy road. I figure they'll use the same detour they did when they were going to close. And they'll probably go uh.
Will be coming out.
Oh, you're in uh on out.
Well, on the other way.
Or the other way, you can go down, at least, at least one's not gonna be closed at the same time. Lastly, just a couple of things, uh Community Crossings has been applied for. Uh, they closed on the thirty-first of October, so I hope to hear something back from Community Crossing. For twenty twenty-six sometime probably in January. Lastly, uh, just a quick update, uh. Our community crossing project has been paved. You'll be signing the final claim for that contract, then I'll be sending the closeout paperwork to Endot. So that job can be closed out and uh we'll be good to apply for community crossings next year. Uh, the process works is you gotta, they allow you two years to get a project done. With us, we usually get it done within a year, so it's not an issue. So I'll be working on that. Uh, for the project there that uh did the repavement up on Trackville and Feller. Uh, strippers will be in tomorrow to strike that, and that project will be done. So all our paving for twenty twenty-sixth or twenty twenty-five. Through contracts will be complete on Wednesday.
Do they need to do any gravel on the edges of that?
It's already done.
Okay.
Yeah, so in our contracts, this everyone understands when we do our contract paving, uh we do the asphalt, we do a stone shoulder. So there's no drop off at the edge of the road for safety, as well as because of brand new pavement being black. Especially this time of year, you know, it gets dark early, it gets, you know, foggy morning like this morning. The the road disappears at night. So what we do is if it's not on our normal. Line striping road list, okay, which gets striped every year, which is a thousand vehicles a day or more, we do a one-time striping for safety. So either depending on the width of the road, we're either gonna do an edge line on both sides of the road, or we're gonna do a set one-time center line. Again, the idea is by time they fade out, the road is gray to a point where. You don't have the issues you have with the brand new black road at night. That's all I got. Thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Daly, Director of Planning and Zoning. Beacon subscription fee increases soon.
Good morning, Nicole Daly with uh Different County Planning and Zoning. Um, one of the items I'm here for today in working on the uh Beacon Beacon website. There are a couple new features um that uh will be available. And with that availability, um I am wanting to raise the fee schedule for the GIS. Which this is included in. Um, the first one is. Um, we have different tools that are on Beacon, um that if someone subscribes. And you're looking at title searchers and real estate agencies that use comps and. Other tools that are on there that we've been charging ten dollars for a monthly fee, they could pay a hundred dollars for a yearly fee. Um, because there's gonna be added tools, I wanna be able to raise those uh subscription fees. Um, to thirty dollars per month or three hundred dollars for the entire year. Um, the additional tools that that also includes is when we have a request for GIS data. Um, I'm usually the one that will download that information and email it to them as they pay for that information. This will allow them to pay the subscription and be able to do that from the Beacon website there themselves. Um, so that will save me the time to do that, plus we're still getting. Um, the payment that we had in the fee schedule before, um but this will just be changed, um and it will be up um as well. So that's one of the items that I was looking for approval to raise those uh prices on the GIS um fee schedule.
What is the current, like revenue at the current fee rate?
Um, currently, it's not much. Most of the real estate agencies and title searchers, they'll pay the ten dollars. The ten dollars as they need it. Um, occasionally, we do have some that'll pay the hundred dollars. Um, I'd see the increase being in the uh ability to download the actual layers themselves. Um, so that's kind of one main reason um for the increase. And then the um other is there will be available tools for the real estate agent title searchers. Um, in that that have been added to the Beacon website.
Can you justify those increases?
Yes, well, the one justification was um as far as my time, so we charged twenty dollars for uh data requests. That had to come through me, um at twenty dollars.
Yet they were already paying.
They're already paying that twenty dollars, uh but this time it increased to thirty, which then allows, does, I don't have to do it. So the time savings for mine and then just the increase to be able to do it themselves, um that alone. Um, I think we're gonna see the increase right in that tool alone.
Any other questions on that?
And then the other one that would be an uh increase to the fee schedule. Um, I know you had some questions on this particular one. Um, is there will be a new tool on the top of the Beacon website as they flip. Change their screen or change a property search. Um, there will be a a header at the top. That will be uh for all types of advertisements. Those can be internal and external advertisements. Um, one for as far as meeting announcements, um there's up to thirty that can be rotated. Uh, on there and some of the communities to help pay for additional costs with these websites. Um, will charge fees for advertisement and the people that want those advertisements are usually your title searchers and your real estate agencies. Um, because of the uh just the capability of the searches. Um, so I had set up a fee schedule for that. Um, I do not have the questions that were asked as far as the other communities in Indiana and how they tackle. The um question of what, how to facilitate, who it can um advertise. They haven't gotten back to me on that, and I don't know, Andy, if there's anything in there in state code itself on how that.
Yeah, it's just my, my concern was, you know, there are certain businesses that the county wouldn't wanna be perceived as promoting. As promoting, and I don't know it.
Were you, can you name one?
And and I don't think you can say if 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 it's, if all things being the same, I don't think you can turn away somebody if they've got some money and hand it out to you. And so. My suggestion would be to go ahead with the increased fees at this time and allow Nicole and I. Um, to work on this whole advertising question, maybe address that at a later date.
As far as at least putting the advertisement piece in there, um and if it's determined, we just won't use them. Uh, but the advertisement is there for other departments in the building, um but throughout the campus. Uh, for commissioners meetings, plant commission, any meetings that they want advertised. So it's not just business related, but these um other items can be internally uploaded. Um, so uh we wanted those fees to be able to at least be there just in case we can determine that it. There's something that we can do um on there.
Okay, uh and I think, what do you think if we if we proceed with this? You're indicating that it could uh generate eight uh eighteen thousand dollars a year?
Well, it's so the eighteen, but this is, this per year is what we are charged, eighteen thousand dollars.
I'm sorry.
Generate some money.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, the money you generate. I think it would be, and you can discuss that, it probably should go toward that fee.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any of these fees should.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, the GIS, the, at least the the um on the the upper this uh subscription, what they've generally gone to. Is the GIS perpetuation fund, um and that helps pay for um computers, servers, anything related to GIS work.
I just wanna keep everything.
Yeah, the advertisement, I was thinking as far as going into to help pay for the subscription or the. Uh, paying for the Beacon website itself.
If it stays internal, it would still be something you have to upload. It isn't gonna be, Sue couldn't go on and upload or Connie couldn't go upload.
Uh, as far as the.
If you had a meeting, she would have need to send it to you.
Yeah, so internally I have to, uh, we're gonna figure that out as far as. That's why those will be ea- easy, yeah, you have to have access to be able to upload it. Um, so. With that, uh, I plan on having myself and another person in my office with the ability to do that. So that the any notifications that people wanted internally for meetings could be done so uh at a quick pace.
It's a really good source for taxpayers too, because everybody gets on there, like our deductions, stuff, we talked about that.
Yeah, I would like to see it and up until the time the the advertising becomes a reality, have it as a. Yeah, I would like to see it and up until the time the the advertising becomes a reality, have it as a bulletin board for meetings. Information, whatever's going on. So, yeah, that's a great idea, just a another source of.
Yes.
Information to get out.
Yeah, and it rotates, like I said, every time they switch paces. Um, and we do, we have the ability to calculate those views. Um, I think at one point in six months, it was a views of o- over a billion people. Um, and within a six-month period now, and then they also break it up into how many times they. Click to switch to different pages. Um, so it is a valuable tool that um helps the citizens of Dearborn County.
Okay. All right, then uh. Motion to approve raising the Beacon subscription fees from ten dollars per month or a hundred dollars for an entire year to. Thirty dollars per month or three hundred dollars for an entire year.
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And then also, I'm not sure, I put this email together uh yesterday, sorry for the late notice, um, but um. I have been getting some feedback. Um, I was wanting to apply for a. Uh, planning grant for bicycle and pedestrian uh master plan. That would coincide with my comprehensive, the comprehensive plan we are working on, um, and will be working on into the twenty twenty-six. Um, with the how this came on and the fast turnaround for the application, which is due November fourteenth. Um, all I'm looking for is approval to move forward with that grant. Um, so far I have, um, there is a twenty thousand dollar match. Um, but I have actually reached out to OKI redevelopment and to tourism and. Um, they've all offered to be able to help me cover that uh twenty thousand dollar match. Um, so it would be no expense um from the county to uh move forward with that grant.
Can you see me after the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so that I was looking to try to get an approval for that, um, just to move forward with applying for the grant on that.
Okay, you just need a a motion to approve.
For the did the Dearborn County application, just to move forward with it.
I did just as long as it stated that no funds, the matching funds will be from outside.
Yes, yes, and that's that's the only way I would move forward is the additional funds. Um, so far it looks like twen- or ten thousand would be from OKI. Um, five thousand dollars would be from the tourism, um, and five thousand from redevelopment. That's where we're looking at right now, and this is county-wide.
I'll second, all in favor.
Aye.
Uh, motion carries.
And you'll you'll get that paperwork and she can stamp his name on it, and I'll take it to town.
You have the idea of where it would be?
Yeah.
But, I mean, you're you're talking about uh the bicycle trail.
Yes. So the money is to be uh to help with the consultant, to help with that plan. Put aside at the same time as we're doing our comprehensive plan. So one of the requirements for getting the uh grant. Is to that it has to be adopted into a comprehensive plan. Um, so it works out perfectly that we're working on the comprehensive plan and can tie those into um it as well.
Okay.
Uh, so, but it would be county-wide um to look at those through the parks, um, and additional trails and walkways.
Okay.
Connectivity.
Just see me after the meeting.
Okay.
Couple of things, actually. All right, thank you.
It's uh, it's the planning grants for bicycle and pedestrian improvements that's through the Indiana Department of Health.
Thanks, Nicole. All right, ratifying signature on twenty twenty-six OKI funding agreement.
Um, yeah, each year, OKI gives a an agreement that needs to be signed. They've started doing DocuSign. Instead of sending us a hard copy. Um, Kevin is our representative on that board, so they sent it to him and he Docu-signed it on the twenty-fourth. And so we just need to ratify his signature from the DocuSign. Um, the contract is for sixteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. Um, that's the same amount as it was last year, and it is approved in the uh commissioner's budget.
All right. Got any questions?
Nope.
All right, motion to ratify the agreement signed by Commissioner Turner. Uh, for the. Uh, twenty twenty-six OKI funding agreement.
So moved.
Uh, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. You have anything else for us, Ms. Hayden? Ms. Fromhold, claims? Motion to approve claims.
So moved.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries. Payroll, motion to approve payroll?
So moved.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries. Uh, motion to approve the Dearborn County Board of Commissioners meeting minutes of October twenty-one, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
You can just go.
Yeah. Anything else for us, Ms. Fromhold?
That's it.
Did you say we needed something, a policy for SC or uh?
Council has to sign.
Council has to, okay.
Yeah, so I'm gonna take it to council on Thursday.
Mister Biden, does he have everything? How many of them? You going on vacation or?
The snow flies.
Okay, do we have any late arrival information? Public comment? Then, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.
Yeah, I said the deed already.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I didn't wanna. I was making on Larry a little bit.
If you had an idea of where that. Logan, over the park.
But one of the ones, so it's a.
Okay, I.
With higher and also, and that's one of the ideas as far as.